Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
One speaker card, Pete Sluis.
I'll try to be quick, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to real briefly, I skipped the last couple of meetings, so you're kind of, I've had notes kind of going, I won't even go through them all.
Do you need nine minutes?
I need 29 minutes. On the litigation stuff that's going on, I'm really glad that PS, the PS Square, Pioneer Square, and the Light Rail, I'm glad to see the city is being deliberate. Thirty years ago, we had MetroLink come through us, everybody was kind of supportive of commuter rail, and thirty years later, we're still having major problems with them. It was not really done right, the community kind of supported it, we wanted commuter rail, and it caused huge problems for thirty years. So I just wanted to make sure that you know that the community expects you guys to push back. You know, we want to do things, we want Pioneer Square, we want, you know, Light Rail, we want stuff, we want progress, but we also expect people to do it rationally and do it with a deliberate, you know, city's best interests, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. Everybody likes the pretty pictures, but if you look at the picture versus what its reality is, if you look at the picture of Azusa downtown, you look what's actually there right now, it's two totally different things. And I'll get out of, I'm not going to go through everything. I saw that Azusa is going to put in a substation, sure, or not, a metro substation next to the station for just, for crime and just to watch over that station, as they're having all kinds of problems. I have a lot of other things, I'll bring it up in some future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Any further?
Those are all the speaker cards.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm so sorry, I didn't realize I needed to sign up beforehand. I'm Nancy, I'm Nancy Munoz, the teen and adult librarian over at San Dimas Library. And I just wanted to bring everyone a little bit up to speed on what we're doing at the library. This is our last week for our In-N-Out promotion. We're trying to encourage children to read more, so this promotion is open for ages four through 12. And what children do is they read five books, and they come back into the library, and In-N-Out has provided gift cards that we can then give to the child. So every, for every five books, they get a free hamburger or a cheeseburger, and they can do this up to three times. This is an annual event that we have each year, and it's always a favorite with the parents. They love coming in and just getting a little bit of help for dinner, along with getting their children to read. And also, we have another important partnership that we're very proud of. Every month, we have an adult book club that meets here at the San Dimas Senior Center. So we are partnering with the, with the city, and it's the first Wednesday of each month from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. And for December, we will be reading No Time Like the Future by Michael J. Fox. I believe this is his third biography, and the book club has been growing. It slowly flourishes, I think last time we had our meeting, we had up to 19 people. So there's a lot of interest from the community, and we're very proud of these programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by, with one motion, unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
I'll move approval, there are no items to be...
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent calendar passes, 5-0. We order into other business, introduce introduction of ordinance 1295, and set a public hearing for November 22nd, 2022. Henry? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the building standards codes. These updates are due to state laws that have been passed since the previous adoption, and to reflect changes made to the model codes through code hearings, panels, and processes. The California Building Standard Law allows the governing bodies of local jurisdictions to adopt the building standards as written, or they may make amendments to the building standards codes with findings due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions unique to that jurisdiction. The effective date of this triennial edition is 180 days after publication, which is January 1st, 2023. City staff recommends that the city council read by title and introduce ordinance 1295, and set a public hearing date of November 22nd, 2022.
Any questions?
I move that we read by title and introduce ordinance 1295 and set the public hearing date for November 22nd, 2022.
Madam Clerk?
I need a second.
Second.
Ordinance 1295. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas, California, amending specified chapters of Title 15 of the San Dimas Municipal Code, and adopting by reference the 2022 edition of the California Building Code, volumes one and two, the 2022 edition of the California Residential Code, the 2022 edition of the California Plumbing Code, the 2022 edition of the California Electrical Code, the 2022 edition of the Mechanical Code, the 2022 California Fire Code, and the 2022 California Edition of the California Green Building Standards Code, and the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, together with certain amendments, additions, deletions, and exceptions, including fees and penalties.
Read further reading?
Yes, so moved. And introduce.
We set a public hearing?
I think that was included in the motion.
Right.
So you can just vote now.
So that, November 22nd, 2022?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is set for November 22nd, 2022. You did a great job, Jeff. Oral communications, this is a fast meeting. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. It's obviously raining outside because the whole left side of the chambers is vacant. So, anyone wishing to speak during this second oral communications? We have any cards? Nope?
No.
Okay, city managers' report.
I have a short report for today. It's always wonderful to introduce new employees to the cities, in the city council. Today, I'd like to introduce our new senior analyst in the Administrative Services Department in the city manager's division. Anissa Levas comes to us from the city of Fullerton, and has an experienced senior analyst with the city, and we're very fortunate to have her here, and I'd like her to stand up and introduce herself.
Anywho, why don't you come up to the podium so that people in the public can see you out there.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here. I'm Anissa, I'm coming from the city of Fullerton. Started there as an admin analyst in the city manager's office. Finished my time there as a senior analyst, and I'm on week three, and staff has been warm and welcoming, and just really happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And what we're looking at is enhancing our public information, centralizing emergency management in the city manager's office under Anissa's leadership, and a number of other special projects across various departments in the city. So it should help us quite a bit in terms of command and control and coordination. The second piece, I know that there's probably a lot of folks out there wondering what's going on in our city based on the storm that's currently rolling through the city. We, on a normal basis, telegraph when the storms are coming and actually act in advance. So I'd like to invite Sherri Garwick to come up and talk a little bit about the preparations that we have and what she currently sees occurring out in our community today.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Being a foothill community, we, we see several exacerbated rain conditions, so we begin our preparations for storm events early. For this event, particular event, we began our preparations last week by doing storm patrol, cleaning up channels, and cleaning out catch basins. We have a contractor in town that is cleaning our catch basins for us, priority catch basins. Yesterday, we enlisted the Parks and Rec crew, and they helped us clean up, do our storm patrol, where we patrol hotspots in the city. And then we've had crew out as recent as half an hour ago doing storm patrol. We've weathered this system pretty well, we've had some potholes, some debris down. We also go to construction sites right before the rain event and make sure, and we inspect them, and enforce the best management practices be used to protect the storm system. So we, we didn't have that much problem with this storm event, but we, again, we, we have some debris that we need to clean up, and we'll go back and repair some potholes tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
And with that, that ends my report.
Thank you. Any questions of, Chris? Seeing none, we'll move to the city attorney.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Members of the city council, council members reports on any expense, at any expense, at any meetings you attended? Seeing none, city council requests for future items? Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had received a few communications from residents who had expressed a willingness or interest in us looking at our parking policy. And so I wanted to see if the city council would be open to having our planning commission look and examine our, our parking ordinance and make recommendations perhaps with input from the public. I had met with the city manager last week, and I believe it hadn't been updated in something like 20 years or something like that. So I think that for, since the 90s or something, I can't remember, Chris, was it, what was the...
This is a section, chapter 10, point 24, and specifically, you're referring to the overnight parking restrictions.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yes.
And so, just to give context for some of the use cases, overnight parking, you can't get a permit unless you use all of the spaces allocated to your house. In one instance, a resident had a very large truck, and he wasn't really able to fill his garage, which was, you know, it's a very, very small garage with both the truck and car, and so he was asking for an exception there. There was someone else during COVID who had turned the garage into like an office, and because he turned it into an office, he couldn't park his car there, and so that was like another use case. And so I think that, taking a look at this thing, if there's any flexibility we want to build in, having a recommendation coming from the commission might be worthwhile. I thought it would be something that we would ask the commission to look at in greater detail with input from the public. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to have, I believe, it's the, it's the planning commission, the jurisdiction, isn't it?
It, it would be just two council members asking for that to be agendized for planning.
I'd be willing to, to second that, or be the second person.
Thank you.
And could you please, whatever the communications were that were received, I did not receive them, so...
Yeah, I can forward you one, and the others were people talking to me, so there's no written, but I'll forward you the, the email that I, I believe it was sent to you, Mr. Mayor, as well, but I'll send it to all members of the city council so that you have it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, when, when, could you bring this back for, to set it for a hearing? To see if we want to discuss it?
So we can put it on the next...
We have two, we have Eric and, and John.
That's just for staff to look into it, essentially.
Look into it.
I might be missing the question, I thought you were referring this directly to the planning commission.
I, I thought in your clarification...
Yeah, you said you, we have to set it here first, and then, then we decide if we want to send it to the planning commission.
The normal process would be two council members are requesting it, we would, we can put this on the next agenda to give direction, specific direction, to the planning commission, and then from there, at the next meeting, you can take action to direct the planning commission and the parameters you're looking for. So yeah, we can easily do it the next meeting.
And this also might be, might be something that, although we're sending it to the planning commission, it might be something we need to talk about with the Public Safety Commission because some of the reasoning for the parking deals with public safety. So maybe we have to do some type of a joint meeting with them, or some kind of conversation to see, because I think both, both commissions should have an opportunity to weigh in on it.
Absolutely, at the next meeting, you can give the direction for it to go to both commissions.
Right. Okay, Eric? Anything else?
That's it, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Eric?
I do have one thing, I'll make it quick, it's a request. Some may remember that back when I was campaigning and before COVID interrupted just about everything, I had voiced a desire for the city to look into a citizen satisfaction survey, just to identify areas in which the city's excelling and those in which we could do better. That was kind of interrupted with COVID, but as we got into this strategic planning discussion, I got to thinking about it again, and thinking how beneficial would be to have that survey in hand and that information at hand so that when we're doing a strategic planning session, we can, you know, more effectively identify the areas that are important to the public and, and create that, that vision for the future of the city. So if anybody's perhaps interested in looking into a citizen, citizen satisfaction survey.
I'm interested in that, and I'd also be interested in discussion about funding identification to execute such effort, if there's anything fruitful from that, from the council's discussion, and whatever staff prepares. Interested not just in what he discussed as it relates to the customer satisfaction survey, but also in having staff identify potential funding options to be able to carry out that, should we do it when we talk about it.
Carry out the satisfaction survey itself?
Correct, yeah.
We'd be setting that for, just like the last item.
We'd be sending that for a discussion of the council at the next meeting, and I think what I'm hearing is get clarity on funding, identifying funding so that that discussion could occur at the next meeting.
Yeah, it just should be part of the discussion, how are we going to do it if we do it? Right? And it should, I would imagine that should happen before we engage in the strategic planning process?
Yeah, that'd be the goal, is to hopefully have that in hand.
Okay.
All right. When do you think you'll be able to bring that back?
We, we will endeavor to try to get it for the next meeting, but probably the first meeting in December.
Okay, thank you.
But don't hold me to it, just in case some hiccup happens along the way. But yes, we should, we discuss that prior to doing the strategic planning consultant.
Super, thank you. John, you said it was short.
Okay, we've exceeded our quota of asking staff to do a bunch of things. So I'm not going to, but I, you know, I should have asked this during your report, Chris. I thought we were going to talk about a date for discussing, for setting a meeting, a study session or something, for discussing the commission appointments, numbers, everything like that. I've got my calendar, where, where are we on that?
Be cautious what you say.
So, given that the meeting, the seriousness of the topic itself, the council's desire to have all five council members be able to attend a Saturday meeting, and so we've been providing dates to the council over a period of several months, and unfortunately, we have not been able to get all five council members confirmed for a specific date. We've currently provided January and February dates and are awaiting all the council members' response as to which dates work. If we're, if we don't get anything over the next week or so, my recommendation with the clerk has been, we'll agendize it for a conversation at the council meeting where we will be asking you to bring your calendars, and we will actually set the date during the council meeting so that we can get everybody confirmed, and then we'll start the planning process.
Okay, yeah, because one of, I mean, there's a number of things, but one of the things that made me think about it was I went to the senior commission reading, they already have a vacancy, somebody just termed out, and they're asking, when are we going to, you know, be able to appoint somebody? So I mean, we could also, just a suggestion, do it as a study session, starting at 5:30 or something like that. I know it's a long discussion, but maybe it would, we could get started one meeting, then have a continuation of the next meeting. But, but there is a little bit of urgency to it, so the commissions can work properly and work the way we want them to, and the way we liaison or appoint people. But that's, that's all I have.
Ryan?
All right. Isn't the city manager eval coming up? Is that January?
The city manager's evaluate, well, I think we're set at July dates now.
Okay, well, we'll figure that out if all this other stuff happens. That being said, tonight's election night, so if you haven't voted, you've got about 40 minutes to get down to vote. You need to be in line at, well, before 8 o'clock. So you can vote here at the Stanley Plumber Building, you can vote at Holy Name of Mary, and a few other sites throughout the city. So I highly encourage you to visit the city's website, sanddimascav, click on the elections button on the city's website if you need information, or you can visit www.lavote.gov. There's a lot of very important races locally, as well as state and federal propositions and measures. So if you haven't voted, I encourage you, I implore you, please go vote. It doesn't matter how you vote, just vote. Well, it does matter, but think about it, do a little bit of research, and, you know, do what you got to do. That being said, I heard from a few people with regards to the sheriff's department, they started the Citizens Academy, I think that's a great thing that has kicked off. The folks that have attended have spoke very positively about their experience, the education they're receiving. I do think that our sheriff's department has done and does do a very good job here in town. They participated in the trunk-or-treat event, some of the radio cars were done up pretty well. And if people don't realize it, and I know we talk about it, but our volunteers, our historical society, and so many other groups in this community make a lot of things happen. So as we get into the holiday season, Thanksgiving ahead, I just want to say thank you to all the civic organizations, as well as the sheriff's department and others that do some pretty awesome things during this time for a lot of people in need, not just here in San Dimas and the unincorporated area and surrounding area. Lastly, the city's been dealing with a lot of different issues lately, and those issues not only deal with the finances, it deals with some of the future of the community. As you see, the metro gold line coming to fruition, at least in the infrastructure. You've heard some community members talk about the double-track expansion project and what impact that has. The council, this council has a lot of serious things that are seriously going to impact the future of our community during the terms of the people sitting here. So I encourage everyone, as always, please reach out to your council members, please engage. I know a lot of people tend to comment in social media or Nextdoor and all that kind of stuff, and then they reach out to us individually, but that being said, you also would be served well and heard well by all of us if you shot us emails. You can email council@sanddimascav.gov. That will email the entire city council with any of your concerns, and that way, we can all be on the same page, hear you, as so many of you already do when you have concerns. That being said, I would just want to thank everybody for an awesome Halloween. I think there were lots of really cool folks dressed up, we got a number of kids on our block. I don't think we had any major incidents in the city, and I had the chance to see the, the mayor and his grandkids stop by the house and were done up pretty cool. The mayor's costume was pretty cute, too. But that being said, he looked like the mayor, and it was great. But I applaud everybody for getting out there, and there's a lot of residents that put a lot of time, effort, and energy into decorating their homes during the holidays, and we have some pretty unique homes throughout the community that really do a really good job of embodying the Halloween spirit. So my hat's off to everybody that did that, I think that's really good for the community to be able to see those things and have those people who really spearhead those spirited efforts in the community, no pun intended. So have a great time, please vote, vote frequently, vote often, and I hope everybody stays dry, or slow down, and if you need sandbags, I think you probably can get them at the Public Works yard during this little weather spout. So feel free to contact the city for that. In the meanwhile, take care, stay safe, and stay dry.
Thank you. I, I do agree with John that we need to look at this commission difficulty, or the appointments of it. I know that there are three separate items that we were planning a Saturday study session for. Can you repeat those three so people at home would know the breakdown?
The first item, the big one, is the Board and Commission Handbook. There's a second discussion of a council handbook, which is extracting elements that were relevant to the council into its own handbook. And the third item is the council's recognition policy, a policy that governs how we recognize businesses, individuals, and whatnot, and establishing the proper protocol to be able to do so.
Super. My preference would be to, still would be to have it on a, on a Saturday, maybe from 8:00 to 2:00. But understanding that calendars aren't matching up, I believe that also could be broken up, or at least we take one portion of it. The commission... be broken up, or at least we take one portion of it, the commission portion of it, because there are people asking and wondering, and maybe we could get that portion out of the way during a study session, but it would, I believe, need to be longer than a an hour and a half study session. I think it would be need to be probably longer. So it's something you might think about and then come back.
I I would have to take direction from the council because the council was explicit about having a Saturday meeting. I could see taking the recognition policy separately and bringing that forth in a study session since we can, that's more compartmentalized. But the Board and Commission Handbook, the last time we did the full review, we had three separate meetings that were all study sessions, and then the approval meeting of the council. It was a very detailed, we had the big matrix with the different potential changes that we went through. So if the council would like to do that during a study session, I just need that direction from council.
I think I agree with the Saturday session. I'm okay with breaking out and agree with you that you probably could do the recognition thing in a study session, but I think the discussion, as evidenced by the last time we did this, is going to be substantive in depth, and I think breaking it up is just going to cause delays in the council getting through what it needs to get through.
So which would mean we all need to pay, you know, look at our calendars and be diligent and come up with a date.
Right. Well, I mean, so that could happen via email, like we've been doing, or just next meeting, just bring calendars, and if we haven't got an agreement by next meeting, let's just set the date here on the dais. I mean...
And I do believe it's important that all five of us be there because it's going to be very difficult otherwise.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Horror at the Walker House or Walker House horrors that day. If we all know, what? What do you mean? Huh? She doesn't want to relive it. Thanks. Thank you. You know, the 20, what was it? The dates, 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th were days that will live on in San Dimas for a long time. Parks and Rec put on the, an event at the Walker House that was second to none in the in the San Fernando, or San Fernando, San Giro Valley. It was our first first Halloween event at the Walker House, and I think that anybody who went there and it was full all three, all four days, it sold out, and I think everybody enjoyed it. I get very good comments from anybody. Unfortunately, we go eat somewhere, you get somebody saying, hey, I saw this, or I saw that, and I won't go into what they said. I saw this and I saw that. But the reality is Parks and Rec should really be commended for all the hard work they they did, and I believe that a good portion of our of our staff who weren't even involved with Parks and Rec were out there helping and volunteering to help. You know, you guys should be proud of yourselves. And now I'm really looking forward to the Christmas extravaganza because it's got something to top right now, and it's going to be interesting. I'm sure Jay and his crew, along with Scott Wasserman, know that the goal, the goal line has been pushed a little further out. So congratulations and thank you guys for doing that job. We're going to move into a closed session. At this time, we will be going into closed session to discuss two cases. Both cases are conference with legal counsel, existing litigation between the city of San Dimas versus the Metro Gold Line Foothill Extension Construction Authority. Jeff, do you have something you'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from that meeting due to a real property conflict of interest.
And so will I.
So it'll be the three of us, Eric Nakama, Eric Weber, and me, and you guys can go home and watch television, I guess. And there'll be a report after the closed session?
There will be a public report.
Thank you. Anybody opposed a journey? We're adjourned.